We cable cast and stream to the public education government programming for over 7,000 homes in our region. I want to call out our staff, a lot of our staff is here tonight, so if you guys would raise your hand. Yeah, so there are one, two, three. Pretty awesome, so yeah, we're gonna be live tonight, which is pretty amazing. Our mission is to connect, connecting community and empowering people. The purpose of the organization is to strengthen community through local independent media. And our vision is to create an engaged, informed, and inspired public. So I hope that you find all of this inspiring tonight. I want to thank our board, the underwriters, and our donors. I also want to thank our partners tonight, which is of course the library for hosting us, and also the Manchester Journal. So, thank you everyone.
I'm a much better writer than I am a speaker, so I'll keep this really brief. The Manchester Journal has been your local newspaper since 1861, believe it or not. And today we're covering more news than ever than before with five editions per week, and of course the Friday print edition that you can still hold in your hand. Coming out tonight is a great way to stay informed and get involved. I hope that you keep it up through town meeting and beyond by reading and watching and supporting local news. Thanks for being here tonight.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Well, again, welcome everyone. My name's Andrew McKeer. It's been my pleasure and honor to be serving as your moderator for tonight's discussion, which I'm sure is going to be an interesting and informative one. I also want to thank our online audience who's joining the live stream. I want to thank all of you for making the time to come out tonight for this. And you can also watch this again if you wind up not getting enough tonight. You can always go back and watch this on GNS website, Facebook, and YouTube channel. And just so in case you want to make sure that you actually heard accurately what you think you've heard one of the candidates said before you fire off letters to the editor or social media posts or whatever. Anyway, great to have you all with us. Just wanted to quickly introduce the candidates, and then explain our format and ground rules for this evening. With us tonight, we have five candidates altogether who will be running for two different select board seats. There are two candidates who are running for a three-year seat, that's Michael Norath and Greg Cutler. And then we have three candidates altogether running for a two-year seat on the Manchester Select Board, and that's Karen Geriak and Lori Coons. And on the TV screen over there, Luke Kruger, who's joining us remotely or whatever. But Luke, we're only looking forward to having you participate just as if you're right here in the room. So basically what we're gonna do is have each one of the candidates give a two-minute opening statement. And they'll tell us, you know, why they're running and introduce themselves. And after that, Sharice and I will take turns asking hopefully a total of about five questions altogether. So that way we give each one of the candidates the opportunity to be the first responder, as it were. Everyone gets also to be the second responder, third, fourth, and fifth responder equally. And from there, we're gonna turn the microphone over to you folks, okay? And, well no, excuse me. First, we're gonna ask them each set of questions. They'll have two minutes to answer the question. Since we're doing a forum and not a debate per se, there won't be rebuttals at that point. But then we will go to the second segment of the show, and you guys will be able to ask questions of the candidates. You can ask a question to an individual candidate if you wish, or ask a question to each one of the candidates. We'll only ask you to keep your questions sort of questions, and give us as much time as possible to give as many people as possible in the room a chance to ask a question. Then we'll wrap things up at the end with a round of closing statements from each of the candidates. They'll have one minute to close things out, and around eight o'clock or so we'll call it a night. So, that is the plan. Let's see, oh, I also just wanted to say, you know, running for public office is not an easy thing to do. It's can be very challenging, can be, you know, really an arduous process. But I think it's important particularly at this point in time to recognize that each one of these candidates is offering their service to our community, and that's really important and very valuable. So I think before we get started, can we all have a round of applause? So, okay. And with that, why don't we get us, get started? So I think we'll keep it simple, and we'll just go down the table from, start with Mike Norath, go to Craig, then to Karen, and then Lori, and then Luke. So, Mr. Norath, if you could get us started, you have two minutes to make an opening statement.
And you have my microphone.
And I do.
Thank you. President Kennedy said, "One man can make a difference and every man ought to try." Those words have guided my public life. I think most of the people here tonight know me, but if you need further background, I do have a website, mikenorath.com, where you can check that out. My opponent in his reelection announcement invited us all to examine his record, which he said would stand, he would stand behind in his reelection bid. I've done that and find there are four areas where we clearly differ. I've suggested we should enact a local charter in order to retain the entire 1% local option tax so we can reduce property taxes. My opponent has conceded defeat on the issue without trying. Instead, he suggests we should increase the local option tax to somewhere between 1.5 and 3.5 percent. Second issue is transparency. I want Manchester town government to be a model of transparency. I have many ideas on how to do that. My opponent leads the league in moving to go into executive session. He chairs a select board committee that has never posted minutes or an agenda as required by the open meeting law. Accountability is my third issue. The select board last adopted a complete capital budget plan in 2015. The result has been repeated unrestrained deficit spending even while the select board has distributed over $1 million in federal ARPA funds. My opponent has been the appointed watchman for the select board for the last several years. The select board designated him to review and approve all checks before they are signed by the treasurer. Amounts were taken from the property tax relief reserve fund on his watch without the required approval of the voters. The select board needs to respect the votes adopted at town meeting. The watchman did not alert the select board before these transfers were made. I reviewed the minutes of the select board for the last two years and could find no time when the watchman gave any report to the board. My fourth issue is to protect our public water supply. Manchester has only one public water supply, a gravel aquifer at the bottom of Union Street. The sources for that aquifer were determined at great expense to the town and protected by the aquifer protection zone and the zoning bylaw and restrictions in the aquifer protection zone. My opponent pushed through the select board on a three to two vote, a zoning amendment erasing some of those protections in order to allow a single developer to develop a resort at the end of Benson Road. The Cutler Amendment allowed the proposed resort to use our aquifer protection zone as a sewage treatment area for 10,000 gallons per day of raw sewage. I'll push to repeal the Cutler Amendment.
Mike, time's up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Greg Cutler. I was gonna start by introducing myself and letting you know that I got here in 2009 from Boston and had been couch surfing up until then from 1978. And my wife grew up here, and my kids went to BBA and give you that whole happy spiel. But Mike sort of changed that plan a little bit and has made or leveled quite a few accusations. I can really only address one here, I think, at the moment, that being the Benson Road development, which never came to pass. And I would not characterize that as the Cutler Amendment. We looked at that from a number of different standpoints, especially when you consider how many septic systems were already between that particular development and the aquifer protection area. I could get into that later if necessary, but I do want to talk about in this initial intro all of the achievements, I think, that the select board's been a part of. And one of them was overseeing the allocation of ARPA funds. We also went through a lengthy and arduous, and ultimately a really good outcome for the Northshire Rescue Squad negotiations, the Main Street sewer extension. I think the rail trail and the bridge over the river that's being done now are gonna highlight our town in a good way, and with a big return on investment. The zoning overhaul and our continued revisions, the new dispatch center at the police, and fire, the emergency rescue building. And the Green Mountain Estates road agreement are just some of the things that I've been working on with the select board for the past 10 years. And there's a lot of other things too that we've accomplished. So, a lot of you know me, I have a Facebook page, Greg Cutler Select Board. I think you probably all know about that now too. And I look forward to answering your questions later in this forum. Oh, you have your own.
Okay.
Get that back to.
Hi, my name is Karen Geriak. I grew up in Manchester. My parents moved here when I was 10. I went to Burburton, then I went to college, then I came home. I've owned multiple businesses in Manchester. I think I'm just a little frustrated with the system as it is now with zoning. I think there's a few loopholes that need to get closed. I'm working, I've been going to the planning commission meetings and working on the parking situation, which I'm very passionate about, good or bad. Really, that's it. I'm probably the least knowledgeable candidate out of the three, but if I was elected, I would promise to do it correctly and give 120% of my body and soul to the community because I think it's important. I want to be very transparent, and I am concerned with the aquifer as well. That's it, sorry.
Be my second time in my life speaking into a microphone, so here we go. And glasses off at my age. My name is Lori Coons. Most of you know me as I served on the select board for three years. I'm an eighth-generation Vermonter that was born and raised in Bennington. I have lived in Manchester for more than half of my life. In 1996, I moved here with my daughter, and like many of you, the motive was so that she could get an amazing education, which would provide her with the opportunities that I felt I didn't have. I don't recall exactly how much money I had when I moved here. I know it wasn't enough for a security deposit because it was waived by the woman who let me live in her home. She took a leap of faith and gave me a safe place to call home, an early adopter of home sharing. In Bennington, I had worked in the school system as a paraprofessional for at-risk kids that had traumatic experiences at home, and I waitressed to make ends meet. In Manchester, I took a new job at an outlet store. One day, a customer asked me to interview for Orvis for an inventory position. Fast forward, after several promotions, I became the director of merchandising for their UK division. During my last years at Orvis, I traveled over 200 days per year. I decided to take a step back and I left Orvis after 14 years to spend more time with my now two children. I went to work at the Vermont Country Store where I was again promoted into my current role as director of merchandising. This path has not been accidental or luck-driven. I've worked hard, I'm an excellent listener, I enjoy solving problems, and strive every day to be kind and nurturing to the people around me. When I served on the select board for three years from '21 to '24, we accomplished so much in that time. I leaned in, I attended every meeting, I built relationships with town employees, I served on the first housing task force, I attended BCA meetings, I spent countless hours doing research and asked a lot of questions. I made myself available to anyone that reached out. It was rewarding to me to be able to contribute and give back to the community I love. Tonight, I will share my answers to the questions that were provided and any questions that you have. And my hope is that you will learn more about me, and that that will translate to earning your trust to do the work again and obtain your vote. Thank you.
Okay, over to Luke Kruger on the TV screen.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry to keep you inside.
Oh, he needs to be loud.
On the party's gotta hitch, right?
This is where we play the theme to Jeopardy. Yeah, it's always a good filler. Right, Ivan?
Is he in the microphone?
What's it sound now?
Supposed to be coming out of the TV. That's interesting.
How about the mic, how about the microphone? Would that be feedback?
Oh, boy. Yeah. It's not seeing audio through their HDMI. It's not an option. Like, I mean, we're on the television.
Is it on microphone in the bottom-left corner of the Zoom screen?
Yeah, he's getting there right at microphone.
How about now? We're good? All right. Sorry to slow you. We'll prop us down. I apologize, it can't be there. I got the stunk bug that's been filtering through the schools here in southern Vermont for the past few months. So thank you for everybody who was able to make it possible for me to zoom in. My name's Luke Kruger, and I've been a resident of Manchester for about six years. I have worked in various schools, Long Trail, Arlington, and I'm currently a hazing, harassment, bullying, restored justice coordinator for the PRSU. My choice to live in Vermont was a very clear and decided choice. A few years ago, I was working at Green Mountain College as the director of student life. I'd held that job for about three years, which was the longest anybody had held in 20 years, and tells you just how intense it was. And I was looking at getting back into being a professor, and I had offers around the country to take up professorships. And my wife at the time, she and I sat down, and we realized we didn't want to leave Vermont. This is the place we wanted to be. And so we made that conscious choice to start making the moves we had to, and that led me into, excuse me, into secondary, elementary, and middle school education, which I've loved, and I continue to work in that field. I'm also very active in the Manchester Fire Department, and I have a pretty extensive portfolio with the Episcopal Church, both locally, statewide, and nationally. Now, the reason I'm running is because of a love for community service. It's always been central to my character. My parents embodied it as well. Giving my time to make a difference matters to me. And I'm proud of my service. I'm in the Episcopal Church. At the last state convention, there was a need for a Vermont representative to serve on the Title IV board, and some of my colleagues said, hey, hey, you've got the background in these investigations, you should put your name in. Nobody else did, but I was happy to do it because the need was there, I was happy to answer the call. When a call goes out at 2:00 in the morning for the fire department, even if it's a broken smoke alarm, I don't mind. I like being there for my fellow citizens. Someone has to be there, and it's an honor to serve my brothers and sisters at that time. I'm not a political animal. I have no aspirations for a life in politics, only continued service to my community where my fellow Manchester residents feel I am best suited. Now, in entering this race, I realize the select board is not a cure-all, but it is our highest administrative body. And if there's a place to start to advocate and initiate programs and policies to make sure that the hard-working people of this town can thrive and not simply survive, the select board is the place to do that. To bring it back to sort of a why, it's simple. I'm a person who knows all too well the challenges of owning a home, balancing family and work, diligently making ends meet. If I can take this opportunity for the hard-working people of Manchester to achieve a balanced and fulfilling life, it's a call my conscience won't allow me to turn down. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak and for the viewers both online and in person to get to know me a little better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Luke. Look at it again, Luke, son. Okay, so now that we've heard from each of the candidates in their opening statement, Sharice and I will take turns asking a few questions to each of the candidates. What we'll do is the, each question will be posed to the entire panel. So each candidate will get two minutes, two minutes.
Yeah, three.
To answer each question. So again, I think we'll just start with Mike and work our way down the panel there to Luke. So, a question I would have us start off with then is one I'm sure all of you are familiar with. Housing is a big issue here in Manchester, as it is across the entire state, and for that matter, probably across the entire country. Mike, how should Manchester address the need for workforce housing?
Well, I think we have a, in place, a very good way of doing that. We have a housing task force that's been charged with studying this issue. They will present a report to the select board ultimately, and it's my hope that the select board will then view it carefully, solicit more public opinion, and move ahead to implement what it approves of. And I'm happy with that as a response to the issue.
So, this is obviously something the select board's been tackling for a long time in different iterations. We had a task force, and it was going along somewhat rudderlessly, and we reined it back in, and the select board actually commissioned this latest group, and they're doing a great job. One of the things that's happening on a statewide level that's gonna be a big player in this is the changes to Act 250 with exemptions in different tiers that will allow for the development of housing downtown where you don't have, you wouldn't be subject to Act 250 permitting. And it depends on if there's ordinances and zoning and water and sewer, for example. So that's one of the really good things that's happening in that, in this arena. The municipality itself can only do so much when it comes to housing. We can provide water and sewer, we can give tax incentives, we can convey town property at a low cost or no cost point of sale. So, that's what we can do as the select board. We can't just put housing up on the backs of taxpayers. And I know that the tax, I'm sorry, the workforce, the housing task force is doing all they can to look at all of the opportunities for public and private entities to accomplish that. Also... Also, um, I'm in, I really don't want to ruin the essence of our town when it comes to housing. And I also want to ensure that the infrastructure, schools, our police force, our Fire Department can handle an increase in housing. And I'd also like to look for alternatives to brick and mortar. Things like a transit system for commuters who come from places as far away as Cambridge, for example, Paulette, that come early in the morning and take people back at night. There are other things we can look at versus just bricks and mortar. And the good news is employers are stepping up and they're creating housing already. Okay, so this is not just a housing crisis, it's an employee housing crisis and it's being addressed by employers. So, uh, that's my take on the topic.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Oh, you've got, that's right, you did.
Yeah. Manchester faces a challenge common to many resort towns, workforce housing. Our businesses struggle to find employees who can afford to live here and that impacts the entire community. We can solve it, but it requires comprehensive, multiple approach. First, we need to understand the scope of the problem, which I think the Task Force Housing is doing. We need a thorough assessment, gathering the data on existing house, housing, vacancy rates, affordability, and the demographics of our workforce. We need to pinpoint the specific types of housing most needed and the income levels of those struggling to find a place to live. Let's partner with local businesses, real estate professionals, and community organizations to get the facts. I think Bill Drunzig has done a great job implementing his housing. We need more developers to step up to the plate in our small community because it doesn't, the burden doesn't necessarily fall on the townspeople. Second, we need to be creative with zoning and land use. My husband and myself, we had purchased the mattress firm building and we put upstairs apartments. Back in 2018, we were probably some of the first business owners to transition into that for our community. There needs to be a public-private partnerships are crucial. If we can collaborate with the developers, offering financial assistance somehow, if that's possible, or land leases, let's engage local businesses and explore sharing housing arrangements, rental subsidies, or employer-assisted housing programs. What Joe Miles is doing is excellent. He's just built three, right? Three units for, for his staff, which I think is wonderful. I think, I think the, um, I think it's good that Stratton bought the O'Connell Lodge in Chalet and, and those, but I think they're, they took a big chunk out of the, the rental market for people, tourists coming here on weekends. So, Bill, if you could develop your hotel sooner rather than later, I think that would be a positive thing for the community. And I think that's about it. And we have to work with neighboring towns because it's a regional, we need a regional solution to integrate workforce housing.
All right.
Sorry.
She answered it all for me.
Sorry. You'll probably do it better.
So, what I believe is that we need to focus on creating a development-ready community in many areas. Access to water and sewer infrastructure is necessary to attract any developer, small-scale or large-scale. I do think there's a misconception that we all need, all we need is one big investor or one big project to fix all of our housing needs. Understanding that a healthy and equitable housing requires a wide range of stakeholders is how we will improve our housing crisis. Some homeowner developers might be first-timers in this type of endeavor. Something that irritates me is when we feel the need, we have to reinvent the wheel and start from scratch. There are smart people all around us and around the globe that have documented projects that are, that already have moved through the trial and error stages. The Agency of Commerce and Community Development has a lot of great information right there in front of us. They created a 224-page Design and Do Toolkit for Small-Scale Home Building that helps guide what they call gentle infill and incremental development. Both are important options that help keep the aesthetic of our small town while creating more needed housing. We as home, we have homeowners right here in Manchester that would love to build a second home on their property. Some people want to downsize and rent their once-young family larger home. Some would have interest in building even smaller structures that could be rented. We supply no guidelines or incentives to make that happen and it's a shame. If getting this done meant we would need to hire a full-time associate to focus on this, I would support that. When we close on the Depot Street property, it is my understanding that the Select Board will entertain taking some of those proceeds and using it towards infrastructure, and I support that as well.
Thank you, Laurie. So, Luke, over to you.
Thank you. So, when I, when I was looking for houses about six years ago, I, we spoke to our Realtor and she had mentioned Manchester and, uh, we sort of said no. We just figured that was priced out of our capabilities and it was when we looked at the properties. We were fortunate, at some point, a property came open and the day it went on the market, we looked at it, we loved it, we put an offer in and we were fortunate to, to land the house. But that was after nearly a year of looking. And so, I'm acutely aware of the prices just for homeownership in Manchester. As Greg rightly puts it, there's very, there's not a lot we can do, this is a free market. But there are things that the Select Board is capable of doing in terms of incentivizing and in terms of looking at availability of rentals. There are a lot of Airbnbs here and I don't blame people for wanting to focus on that as their income generator, but it does take away from affordable rentals that people can use to live within the town and be participatory in the town. Which leads me to the bigger point. When we talk about workforce employment, and I appreciated Andrew, your article in the Journal about how towns are working together. I think that hits to what Taryn was saying. And one thing that's very central to my campaign is working with other municipalities to problem solve because these are things that affect all of us and that helps make us a stronger community within this small portion of southwestern Vermont. But the term workforce, workforce housing, um, I feel is limited and almost makes it as, well, we're bringing in the people to work for us. And I don't think that's the intent. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to make the people who are coming here to help sustain our economy, not just to work here, but to be here and to be participatory. So, when we look at the housing we want to provide, we want to make sure that we're providing them a place that they can live and work and then join and be a part of recreational teams. Their kids can be a part of the schools, they can be a part of the civic responsibilities such as being on boards or committees, running for public office, and so on. So, I, I hope as we talk about workforce housing, we're thinking much more broadly than just simply we're bringing in the workers so they have a place to work and fill the needs of the residents and people within Manchester. I think in our limitations, much of it's already been talked about. We can incentivize investors, we can go forth looking for investors. We can also advocate for this, to the state to help alleviate some of the burdens of building that developers face. We can look at, again, some, the state to some of the issues as regards second homeownership, Airbnb versus rentals, how can we incentivize a rental over Airbnb, et cetera, and so on. And to go back to what Laurie said, we are not the only town facing this. Many towns are facing this issue. Uh, I was just reading this weekend a master's thesis from Iowa State about how does one balance sustainability as well as development in towns under 50,000 people? So, there are people who are out there reading extensively on this and that's the research and the work that we as Select Board people have to sit down and look for and find. Not to say the answers are out there, but pathways to the answers are out there for us. So, in order to address the housing issue, I think it's going to require a lot of research, thinking outside the box, and not being confined as simply as, well, this is how things have been and this is what Manchester is. Manchester's growing and Manchester now gets to decide and chart our future as to how we want to look while retaining much of our old history as well.
All right, thank you, Luke.
Thank you. So, before I ask our second question, I will say, candidates, we want to have enough time for audience questions. So, going forward, I'll be a little bit more strict about calling time on this panel. The second question will start with Greg and then go down the lines and with Mike, but everybody will have a chance to go first, second, third, some further. For candidates, what should Manchester be doing to support and/or facilitate business and development in Manchester?
Thanks, Charisse. Again, I think from a Select Board point of view, what we as the Select Board can do is limited. But, but what the town can do and what private enterprise can do is unlimited. That being said, Manchester is a tourist destination. It's an outdoor enthusiast destination, it's an arts destination, it's a food destination. It's not necessarily someplace where you are going to find that we could easily attract a university for our town, for example, or some major business to come to town. And I think we should foster what makes our town great right now and try and improve upon that. And a lot of my decisions on the Select Board in this area are what's the return on investment that we might be making? And we always leverage any spending with some form of contribution or grant or some form of, uh, loan, grant, whatever we can do to leverage that, that spending. And I think we may be heading into a period of economic uncertainty. As a Realtor, rates haven't really come down too far. So, home sales right now are, are lower. It's hard to find a home, the inventory's low, for example. And, uh, but Manchester can position itself in some of that uncertainty area by being a haven for people to come and visit, for example. So, um, those are, those are things I think about. Zoning changes have already been enacted to help with bringing people here and also enable multiple uses for our commercial spaces. And the 2015 Northshire Economic Development Study identified the Rec Park, for example, as an area that we could look for economic growth. And that project started, but unfortunately rested on the shoulders of one person to a great degree. Is that it? Okay. So, we'll work on bringing that back. I keep getting ready my hand.
All right, two minutes. All right, we all love Manchester, its charm, its beauty, its vibrant spirit. These are things that make our town special, but we also know that to thrive, we need a strong and sustainable economy. That's why I'm here today to talk about fostering business and development in Manchester. We are a tourist town, like Greg said, and we need to add money, I believe, to the Manchester Business Association. Whether we increase that tax, uh, we just can't rely on the past. We need to look to the future and that means investing in things that make businesses want to come here and stay here. First, we need to enhance our infrastructure. That means reliable broadband access for everyone, well-maintained roads, and dependable utilities. These aren't just conveniences, they're necessities for modern businesses. Second, let's cut the red tape. We need to streamline our permitting process, make it predictable and efficient, and bring it online. We need zoning that's flexible enough to accommodate different types of businesses while staying in the rules and allow for revitalization of existing buildings. Third, we need to support the businesses we already have. Let's offer assistance programs, create networking opportunities, and encourage everyone to shop local. When our existing businesses succeed, our whole town benefits. Fourth, we need to attract new businesses. I know that's difficult for the Select Board to do, but businesses that fit Manchester's character and strength. Let's market our town strategically, offer incentives where appropriate, and explore the possibility of business incubators to nurture startups. I'll end there.
I'll start by saying that we need strategic support for nonprofits and we must invest in our community. The Manchester Business Association, I'll agree, supports retailers, restaurants, hotels, and other businesses in our community and surrounding areas. Not only do they manage a website, they also have multiple social media channels, monthly e-newsletters, a visitor's center, digital advertising, promotions, and local events. Every year at the budget meeting, the Select, at the, with the, with the Select Board, the Manchester Business Association presents the outcome of their marketing efforts. Website visits and clicks do translate into an increase in local option tax monies. And we all benefit from their hard work. This year, the MBA requested an increase in their budgeted number to be able to hire an events coordinator. I support this because the pen, because for pennies on the dollar, we are getting first-class marketing efforts that promote our town without having to manage this in-house. As for fostering new development, we need a more streamlined approach to our permitting process that can allow for the ability of interested businesses to see what's possible. As I may have mentioned in how we can develop more workforce housing, we need to be development-ready and that includes businesses. At work, we, we define the current state of a project by where you are in the relationship to the bus. You're either driving the bus, you're being run over by the bus, or you're being dragged by it. And we must be driving the bus to be successful. Being able to guide a business shows that we are committed to their success.
Last but not least, Luke?
Thank you. I think part of what can help draw and develop businesses here is the charm of Manchester. And then how, and I think one thing we're hearing from all the candidates so far is it has to be a fit. When we're bringing businesses in, we can't be looking for just any business based off the money they can bring in. Are they going to fit in terms of what Manchester has created, in terms of its, its identity, its narrative as a town, et cetera? So, we want to make sure that we're finding a good fit and good partnerships with whom we're going to work with. And a lot of that starts off with small local businesses. And I think Manchester's done a nice job and citizens do a good job of supporting local businesses. But I think also we need to be mindful. In the, at the recent, the most recent Select Board meeting, Heidi read a, an opening statement about our appreciation and welcoming of all peoples and all backgrounds and that we, we support them and that's good. But I think what we're seeing, and businesses are understanding this too, their employees who are going to make up a vast and diverse workforce want to work in a place where they feel that their rights are safe and protected. And I think when we look at ourselves as a town, and while the statement was lovely that we support, we also now need to look moving forward and how do we protect and ensure that the rights of those people are kept safe? So, as businesses come here, will the people who are from marginalized backgrounds, people of color, LGBTQ+ community, do they feel safe coming into our community? I feel they will. I think we are very clear on this and we do a good job of that. And I think that's something we can use to, to, to promote our businesses as well. I think also, we need to stress our schools and our schools are going to be going through a time of change and we're looking at a, a reorganization. And I think Randy's done a good job of trying to communicate and give us some sense of that vision. But as we move towards that change, I think we can't forget that we do have really excellent public schools within this area. Somebody who works in there and sees the teachers day in and day out, the work they're putting in, the parents, the administrators, it is a tireless 24-hour job. And I think that we have administrators, teachers, and parents who are working hard for our kids and that's something we need to promote to the people who are coming in. That when they come, they're going to get excellent education, the elementary, middle school, and high school level as well.
And Mike, now I say last but not least correctly.
I, I'd like to just restate the question. What should Manchester be doing to foster?
What should Manchester be doing to foster business and development? At a recent meeting that I listened to, a developer made what I thought was a very interesting and troubling remark about development in this town. The way I heard her remarks, we've abandoned the rule of law in our town when it comes to development and zoning. It seems the zoning bylaw, rather than being the rules that apply to all, has now become the starting point for negotiations over what will be allowed in any particular case, depending on who you are. As this developer pointed out, the town was inviting others to think beyond those limits. It should also set off alarm bells when any developer gets on the agenda of the quasi-judicial development review board to ask how the DRB might respond in the future to a not-yet-clearly-defined project. It didn't here. Developers want to know they are being treated equally and fairly. Cronies want to know what special favors you'll give them. There's no room for crony capitalism, in my opinion. The rules are the rules.
I think it's starting with you, Karen.
Okay. I got the mic.
Wait, there's no question yet.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to be just as tough as Reece was on the time we've been here. There's no more Mr. Nice Guy. Anyway, in the interest of time, because we want to get to questions from you folks in the audience as soon as possible.
Okay.
We have five questions set up for the panelists, but we'll just hope to ask one more, and then we'll turn it over to you guys for a while. I'm highly confident we do not have a shy audience here, of course, looking around at this room. So I'm sure you're going to have plenty of questions to fill up the second half of the program tonight. But if you don't, if you are a little more quieter than I expect you to be, we have a couple more in reserve, so we can go back to asking the panelists here. But we'll start this third question with Karen Murriac, and then go to Lori, then Luke, and back to Mike and Greg. This one is, how can Manchester best balance environmental sustainability and local history alongside growth and development? And perhaps you might wish to comment on whether or not the town should pay more of an effort to use renewable energy, even if it costs more perhaps on the front end? Over to you, Karen.
All right. We all cherish the unique character of our town, the beauty of our natural landscape, the rich tapestry of our history. These are things that make Manchester special. But we also know that communities can't stand still. We need to grow, we need to develop, but how do we do that without sacrificing the very things we love? How do we balance environmental sustainability and local history with the need for growth and development? That's a challenge we face, and I believe we can meet it with a thoughtful and balanced approach. First, we need to recognize that sustainability and preservation aren't obstacles to growth, they're assets. Tourists come here for our natural beauty and historic charm. Businesses want to locate in places where people want to live. Protecting these assets is not just the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. Second, we need to integrate these values into our planning process. Every development project should be evaluated, not just for its economic impact, but also for its environmental footprint and its impact on our historic resources. We need clear guidelines and regulations that protect our natural resources, preserve historic buildings, and encourage sustainable building practices. Third, we need to incentivize sustainable development. Let's offer tax breaks, density bonuses, or expedite permitting for projects that meet higher environmental standards or that restore and reuse historic buildings. Let's make it easier and more attractive to do things the right way. Fourth, we need to engage our community. This isn't something the town can do alone. We need to have open conversations about our priorities, listen to different perspectives, and find common ground. Let's create opportunity for residents, businesses, and developers to work together to find solutions that benefit everyone. And finally, we need to celebrate our history and our environment. Let's support local historical societies and environmental organizations. Let's create educational programs that teach our children about the importance of sustainability and preservation. Let's make sure that future generations understand and appreciate the unique heritage of Manchester.
I'll start by saying that I think that we need to agree as a town what our priorities are. We know that we need more affordable housing and workforce housing to sustain the business we have today. When we build that housing, then what? There lies the tension between economic necessity for material growth and ecological limits. How much are we willing to grow? When we make decisions, the town should always be focused on how it will influence later generations, not just today. We should encourage and possibly subsidize more sustainable environmental practices. For example, if we wanted to double the solar power energy by X date, we should find ways to provide opportunities for people to make this happen. We cannot realistically expect people to choose sustainability options if they appear more difficult or expensive. During my time on the board, he's sitting right in front of me, we appointed Carl Buckholm as head of the Energy Committee. Carl is a wonderful representation of the type of amazing people we have in our community, people who not only have a passion but will take action. It's my understanding that the Energy Committee, along with town staff Gordon Black, were able to obtain a $450,000 grant that will help us make our municipal building energy-efficient. The Energy Committee is a group of volunteers. This is one example of so many that make our community amazing. Let's also take the recent extreme weather events and learn from them. Project out into the future the best way we can prevent building in possible flood zones. You're going to have to shut me off. I will always vote yes to protect our aquifer at any cost. Flood mitigation, protecting our environment, and the people of Manchester is also a yes vote from me. Stating that I am a yes vote on these topics does not mean that I think we should pay for it all. We need to be relentless in looking for state and federal grants, along with other monies to pay or subsidize the majority of these projects. At the end of my term, the Green Mountain Estates' 20 years of negotiations were just months away from coming to an end. I fully supported the town taking over the roads and infrastructure of that neighborhood. It's unfortunate that that development was allowed to ever be created, considering the potential for flooding and the possibility of aquifer contamination. But sometimes, all you can do is go forward. I'm glad the responsibility has been moved to the town where it can be monitored and updated. As we look to extend the sewer lines down Richville Road, we need to find ways to help these community members hook up by obtaining funds from state and federal grants. We need all of our community members, along with us. It's imperative to preserve the environment.
Thank you, Greg.
It's probably over two minutes.
I think history, when we talk about history and environmental sustainability, history teaches us lessons where we have rushed too quickly into developmental ideas without seeing the long-term impact on the environment and consequently on future generations. So we do need to move, not slowly, but thoughtfully in these matters. I think also as a town, it's good that we can talk about our own environmental stewardship and how we are trying to lead the way. We also need to encourage our fellow citizens as well to adopt that lifestyle and take the opportunities. Many people aren't aware of the grants or the opportunities available through Sustainable Vermont, and that citizens can take advantage of these. If we, as a board, as a leadership group, can promote these and make these more widely known and available to the people of Manchester, we make it, we take it now from this grand scheme, and a town that says, yes, we've got grants, we've got money, we can do all these things. But also, so can you, that this is a journey we are taking with you, we are in partnership with you. We are not asking you to take on the undue burden financially or even lifestyle-wise. We are undergoing this along with you, and we're going to help you with that, which I think, again, is another critical role for select board members, is to help guide the people of Manchester to resources available to help foster environmental stewardship. I also think learning at the school level of our history is important, so students can take pride in this area and what it means to us and the history that is bound by it. I'm also very acutely aware of the rebuild. We've talked about mass weather catastrophes up at Brookhaven Treatment and Learning Center, where I'm a board member. We suffered tremendous floods, it's up in Chelsea, and we have now been under about a two-year repair process through this, navigating all of the environmental requirements of it. So I'm acutely aware of the environmental statutes that we face. It's not been easy, but it's also something we're committed to, because it's really an ethos that I think a lot of Ramontra's have. We love the natural beauty of this state, we want to protect it. And I think anybody who comes here and wishes to build a business here, again, I talked about how do they fit? Do they fit with the narrative of the community that we have created here? And I think if they come here and they see that we have put environmental sustainability for sustainability is a big term, environmental is only one part of that. But if we show that we're putting environmental sustainability at the top of our priority lists, I think they're going to want to work with us, because when their customers see that they are working in a town that puts that number one, their customers are going to be proud to support that business as well.
The way we balance environmental sustainability and local history alongside growth and development is through our zoning and planning process. It's something that I think too often is not valued enough for what it is. It lends stability to a community when done right. And so the real key here is the thought that goes into the planning. And unfortunately, in Manchester, we've seen in the last two years at least, a dysfunctional planning commission. And until we can get the planning commission operating properly, not reacting at the last moment, but thinking proactively, we're going to continue to have problems in this area. We have trial and error zoning that we do. We try something, we see it, how it works for a while, it doesn't work out, then we change to something else. This doesn't lend itself to long-term stability, and we need to think about that. And so that's one big area. The other big area which other people have mentioned is how we invest in our town-owned infrastructure, and that plays a role. And playing favorites in either of those areas is misguided, in my opinion.
So touching a little bit on what's already been said, we have mechanisms here in town that protect environmental sustainability, and we have a really good energy committee that just presented to us at our last meeting. And it's very exciting what's happening there, and I think you'll be able to go to the town website and track that, and I encourage you to do so. Before my 10 years on the select board, I was also on the design advisory board, and then I was on the development review board. And those two boards work incredibly hard on behalf of the town, and they do the required things that will look at growth and development with a keen eye on what makes Manchester so special. And I personally would love it if we adhere to the design guidelines more often sometimes, but those are things that they do. Also, again, it's been said, working on the sewer extension on Richville Road, two things can happen, it will provide opportunities for more development and protect the aquifer. And one of the cool things that's happening right now is several of us on the select board are meeting with other board chairs to go over some of the issues that are facing the town and how the ordinance works, and if there's areas we can improve. So they go back to their boards, and they may present those issues. I want to just, in the time I may have left, address some of the things Mike said earlier. My job as the vice chair seems to be to put us into executive session when warranted. We don't go into executive session to keep you from knowing what's happening, we do it for your benefit. We don't go into contract negotiations publicly, because it could put the town at a distinct disadvantage. And most of the time that we're doing that is to review contracts, whether it's for real estate or with, maybe it might be police and fire contracts, things of that nature. We don't do it to keep you out of the loop, and once we've gone through that process, we announce what the outcome was. Also, do I have a minute? How am I doing?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. In terms of the local option tax, every town in Vermont that pays the local option tax, including the city of Burlington and Rutland, pay a 30% fee. The city of Burlington and Rutland have grandfathered city taxes, they're separate from the local option tax. And they administer the city tax, and they also take 100% of the proceeds. If you were to go and try and charter, get a town charter in order to keep your 30% fee, that would essentially be going for an additional local option tax increase. The state would most likely not grant it, and if they did, they probably would take a portion of it. So those are grandfathered city taxes versus local option taxes, and everybody who pays the local option tax, including those two entities, pay the fee. The good news is, they're talking about reducing the fee.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, so I guess now the fun starts. I'm going to turn the microphone over to you guys. I'm sure by now you probably all have a few questions that you'd like to ask. So what we're trying to do here, to keep things like civil and kind of, you know, being sensitive at the time, ask a question, and if you want to direct it to one of the candidates, that's probably good, but you can ask it, you know, to the entire group. We're going to give the candidates an opportunity for one rebuttal per question, okay? So that if somebody wants to make the question, let's say it's directed to one of the candidates, but another candidate wants to say something, we're just going to try and avoid the endless back and forth, basically, is what we're going to try and do here. So Reece, I'm going to, unless you'd be the microphone holder? So Bill Drontz.
The town is fortunate, things go as planned, to shortly receive $1.6 million, give or take, from the sale of one of its assets. How do you think that the town should use that money to best benefit the residents of the community? That's a question for everybody. All right. Anyone want to go first, or shall I?
I'll just say, Bill, that the select board has talked at length about the proceeds from the sale, and hopefully we will close on that. And housing, obviously, is going to be a big concern in how we can help in that regard. But also, I think the extension of the sewer line to cast tariffs on Richville Road and protecting the aquifer will play into it in a big way. If we do lose federal funding, which we may, and creating what I like to call the lagoons off of Warren Brook, that may necessitate the need for expenditure in that area. That's a mitigation lagoon to keep flooding from going down further down, and we've seen a lot of problems there. So that's my answer.
Is there anyone else?
My rule of thumb would be not to spend the money before we get it, and so I haven't thought about how it should be spent, but some portion towards housing seems to me to be a good idea. But some portion towards housing seems to me to be a good idea if there is guaranteed perpetual affordability with that. We don't want to subsidize just one generation of buyers coming in. If we're going to invest public funds here, we want to ensure that it be perpetually affordable.
Go ahead.
Okay. My vote is usually to spend less on things that are nice to have and build capital reserves. I think that some of the monies should go to, again, increasing our infrastructure so that we're ready, ready for projects ahead, but to save it.
I would agree. I think we should save it and use it toward cast tariffs. That's what I would do.
I think the point of saving, investing, and looking long-term is wise. And it comes back to something that's been mentioned a little bit here. And that is, what's our long-term plan and vision for Manchester? And having not just, you know, an eight-year plan, but looking 10, 15, 25 years ahead of what we want this town to look like, we can start then seeing how we want to put this money forward. I can look at an example from the fire department. As trucks start running out of rotation, we need to start replacing them. We need to start saving money for those things. And there are trucks that probably don't get used as much as others, but we need to have them in the event that we need the ladder truck, for example. We have buildings that if they go up in flames, we need a ladder truck available for that. And these trucks are starting to go out of rotation. Unfortunately, they were bought so close together that they're almost going to come one right after the other. That's one small example. But I guarantee if we start looking throughout the infrastructure of Manchester, we're going to start finding a lot of things we're going to have to start putting money to that are going to start going out of date very quickly. So to the point, $1.6 million sounds like a lot. How do we make sure we spread it and get the best bang for the buck in that case? And, you know, I think there's a lot of thought that will go into it coming ahead. And as Mike said, we don't want to spend money we don't have quite yet.
Such an awkward mic to grab.
Greg, this is for you, if you would. Hey, look over the budget that you prepared. A lot of questions, and I think the town meeting is going to be the best place. However, with the fire department, you cut their budget. There's no repeaters that they asked for. There's no Scott Air packs that they need that are outdated if it were your house. And they couldn't go in there. What would you say? And also, the infrastructure money, absolutely. I mean, what you all do on the select board is to try to prevent the property tax increase. And I think, you know, trying to keep it at 3% and we're up to about 6 now, I believe. I don't know that. But, you know, and the firemen too, you know, you have $4.69 per fire call. That doesn't even pay for the gas. So can you answer why you made a decision to cut the fire department's budget?
Thanks, Steve. The fire department budget was brought to my attention after we signed it and, after we signed the budget. And I made some calls and the, we, the board or members have reached out. And we think we figured out a way to finance those two items you mentioned. And if you were at the budget hearing or watched the budget hearing, you would have heard that I'm a huge proponent of core services spending, including the fire department. And was the main proponent for the new dispatch center at the emergency services building. So I would say I'm really interested in remedying that situation. And I'm not going to point fingers and say what happened because it was a little bit surprising to me, too, that we didn't revisit it. The Manchester Business Association presented a proposal for us to fund a events person. And right before we went through the final budget process, they came back and spoke with us. And so we addressed that then. The fire department did not come back and address anything with us. And I was unfortunately under the impression that we did fund that based on their visit to the budget hearing or during the budget hearing. But as I said, we have talked to the chiefs and I think we figured out a way to remedy that particular situation. The amount of money you pay in the municipal tax is about 18% of the total tax you pay. And we work very hard to keep that as low as possible. And we don't have any control over voter appropriations. And, but I have this year stated publicly, both in print and to anybody who wants to listen, that I'm very, much more, how do I put it? Core services are much more important to me than voter appropriations at this point. And police and fire are definitely a big part of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where are you in the back?
Hi, Paul Corogio. Welcome, everyone. Appreciate your efforts here as town potential representatives. Question. Yesterday at the Dorset Inn, there was a great event held by our chamber where we had state senators and House representatives explain to us some of the things they're dealing with at the Capitol, like food and education system, healthcare system, and property rights changes. I'd like to ask all of you, considering you're probably running for two or three-year terms, I'm not sure exactly. But in your term, you'll be dealing with an educational system change that may impact, excuse me, our community and particularly at Burn Burton. One that is proposed to have a school choice system where students and their parents put their names in a lottery to be selected to attend that school. I'd like to know what each of you envision your role is in that process as representatives of our community.
Any takers?
I don't think I know enough about it to comment.
This is a time of great uncertainty in the educational world locally in Vermont. There's a proposal by the governor out there. There's obviously will be many alternatives considered. But I'm very wary of any system that thinks it's going to be successful by reducing further the number of school boards. They are our representatives and they are the ones who are most well-equipped to defend our local systems. The thought that the governor has that you could have a school board that represents all the way from Middlebury or north of Middlebury down to Powell and Stamford is laughable to me. And that it should even be considered is an insult, I believe. I think we have to especially be careful here where we have a school choice system, as you point out, Paul, that is unfamiliar to a lot of other people. And there are powerful interests in Montpelier who don't care for that system. They think it's a challenge to the public school system. We know down here that it's not. There is no public high school to compete against. And if there were a public system that wanted to start, it would have a very hard time competing against Burn Burton and Long Trail School. I think we need to, as a select board, stand ready to back up our educational system that we have here with every ounce of our being.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Just to, I think, I'm trying to get my head around the question. I guess the question is, as the governor's plan is rolled out in more detail, what would our response be to the, as a select board? Is that the question essentially?
Yeah.
Great, all right. So again, the details, when it first came out, were pretty limited. I think the, as they continue to come out, they become a little eye-opening. The idea that we're going to do school choice, but we're going to do a lottery seems absolutely sort of nonsensical and against the idea of school choice. You have a choice, but we're going to put you in a hat and then we're going to choose where you get to go. The reality is, I was brought up in public schools. My kids are going to go to the public schools. One already does go to MEMS. I believe in the public schools and I think that they're important and they deserve our time and investment. And I know that there are people within the public school system who do get opportunities to move into the private sector. They don't go. They can make a lot more money. And yes, some people might say, well, they get breaks. Breaks, they're working. Trust me. They're doing it because they have a commitment to the mission of the public school system that has been in place for 150 years in this country. And it was done to help elevate people of all income classes to let them gain access to education that prior to that was only available to the upper class. We have to make sure that we are protecting and investing in our public schools to make sure that access to education, to make those first steps to rise above the status that a person is in and to achieve that. As somebody who works in the public schools, I'm a huge fan of them and a huge defender. Now, I'm also a big defender of our school choice system in terms of high schools. I think Burn Burton and Long Trail are great options for us, and we've navigated it well. As the governor's plan continues to roll out, we have to make sure that the system we have in place here that has relatively been working for us will continue to thrive. And again, I think we have, it's going to start with the defense of our public schools here.
Thanks for that question, Paul. I think it'd be a huge mistake to mess with Burn Burton and Long Trail. And I'll do everything I can to protect those entities. We moved here largely because we saw that our youngest was going to be able to attend a school that I equated $200,000 tuition with when you stack it up against some of the private schools I know. And I would think that the state, when they're making these changes, are going to probably look at Burn Burton and Long Trail as whether or not they're accepting of all students versus some of the other choice schools. So I'm wondering whether or not they would be, or they would be identified as the high schools in this area as it becomes part of the southwestern district, if they go into the five districts. I did read the plan when it was announced on VT Digger. I downloaded the PDF. And it's very bold. And I think Phil Scott's agenda is very bold and I think it's the right thing. I love Phil Scott's attitude about, we're just trying to make sense down here. He's a common sense guy. I've had the opportunity to talk to him many times. And I think we have to do something. But it's not going to be at the expense of BBA and Long Trail.
I'll just add that I am actually not up to speed on that. I have done a little bit of reading. I've been at work dealing with tariff. We call it tariff university that we're attending now because of our fearless leader. So I have no comment. I think the only thing that came to my mind was something about thinking about the structures of our school. Of course, you know, I'm more focused on infrastructure and making things ready. I know we have the airport property and we continually talk about the airport property as a place for housing. And just throwing out there a wild idea of why would we not build a regional school in that area and turn our schools into housing? Wild, but it's a thought.
I just have a question about housing because I'm very confused. I hear that the population in the state of Vermont has dropped off after COVID. The people that came up here for safety have now left and gone back to wherever. I know that the children, when they graduate up here from school, leave. They don't find jobs in Vermont. They leave. When I talk to people that are working in town, and I suggest you all do this, ask them if they had a place to move to in Manchester, would they move here? The answers I get are no. They live in the state of New York. It's cheaper to live there. They love their farms or wherever they're coming from. So I'm very confused. Who are you building this housing for? And with building codes right now, there's no such thing as cheap housing.
No, it's expensive.
Any takers to go first?
I'll jump in. I think we, you know, we get emails, we have gotten emails in the past from the local schools when they hire teachers. Hey, we just hired a teacher. We think they're great. They can't find housing in the Manchester area. And they'd rather stay close because they're trying to balance family and work. They don't want to be doing an hour and a half commute to New York, Massachusetts. Or even in some cases, to New Hampshire. And so there's a call. Do you have a spare room you can lend this person until housing opens up, till he can find a place? You know, there have been examples of local businesses that have been attempted to bring in highly qualified people who are going to run the business. And they were actually going to take the pay cut to come here. But when housing proved to be economically not doable for them, they had to turn down that offer. So there are people we're trying to bring in. Yes, the population's going down. And I think the question hits on some of the key points there. That some of the costs of living are too high within the state locally. And that's going to drive up the price of rent. I get it. But the availability of homes is slim. I've seen that in friends and people who have suddenly found themselves needing to find housing and want to stay in Manchester because that's where their kids are. They want to be close to them. They want to be involved in their lives. And just finding a simple one-bedroom apartment proved to be like Sisyphus rolling the rock up a hill and then have it come back down. So there is a need out there. I get that the population is dwindling, that the COVID influx we had is falling back. But there are still people who want to be here, that who want to live and work and be participatory in Manchester. And it's teachers, it's regular, everyday workers, business owners that I think I've encountered pretty regularly in my day-to-day life.
Just realized it's an opportunity to plug the fact I'm on the Vermont sales group and the Realtor at Four Seasons Sotheby's.
Phone number?
And the phone number. Thanks, Mike. Housing is cyclical. And we just went through a terrible housing crisis. It's not as bad. I don't get as many calls for rentals. We don't have, people generally will find housing through forums on Facebook, the North Shore Community Forum, other forums where they'll go on and say they're in search of some housing. But the problem, the problem is, is that when somebody moves here for a job or wants to live here, as Luke just said, we don't have affordable workforce housing in Manchester. And it would be an asset. And it's something we need. And we're not the only town in America that's going through it. So it may not be hundreds of units that have, you know, been proposed. But there are some good proposals out there for workforce housing. And as I stated before, some of the employers are working to create housing for their employees also. But we need more. There's a deficit.
I'll really just state that I completely agree with what both of them have said. Working at the Vermont Country Store, we constantly have 10 to 20 positions open that are very hard to fill. And when you're looking for something specific in someone, you have to kind of reach outside the area to find them. And you find great candidates and there is no housing for them to move here. You know, when you say you have to, you know, drive You know, when you, when you say you have to, you know, drive to New York State, not everybody wants to do that. A lot of people want to come to Vermont to live locally in their town and support their town, be with their children, get out, you know, at lunchtime and go to the school and, um, you know, go to sports after school and be able to do all of that. That's, that's part of what's living in Vermont is so special.
Do we have another question?
Can I make a comment? I think, you know, we definitely do need, um, the housing. There's no question. But we had the forum come down from Montpelier and we had that at, at Town Hall. And the issue that we, I think, all took from that is how do you define workforce housing? How do you define affordable housing? How do you define low-income housing? The main problem, I think, here starts on the state level. Their median income right now is over sixty-two thousand dollars. This too is driving the cost of the apartment rentals or Airbnb's or what have you. I think it's really got to start at a state level. And the only thing I see that will work is like the meadows in the fields. It's done on your income. But the problem you have is the cost of to build these facilities.
Yeah, it's not sustainable.
I think it's really got to start at the state and, and the funding has got to come from there.
And I think you should attend a tat, a Housing Task Force meeting and see exactly how they're addressing that issue. But you're right. And there have been proposals for some housing in the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar range, for example. The rental market is, is interesting. I, I also will say that people who moved here after COVID haven't necessarily left. I, it, it's not this area. It may be somewhere, but it's not around here. And I, I, I knew that because when they're just, for example, there's nothing in Wind Hall in any of the chalets that were scooped up by the hundreds after COVID. They're not coming back on the market. People staying here largely because they have, um, really good internet and they can work from home. That's one of the big reasons that they're not scurrying back. But you're right, Steve, and I think the Housing Task Force can speak to that better at this point than probably any one of us, but I don't want to speak for you guys.
Any other responses at the table? No, I'll take the mic back. All right. So I've got a question for you guys while we're waiting for some more audience. Oh, we've got an audience question. Never mind. Even better.
So, uh, we were talking about the environment and I'm just curious as to, um, when we set any kind of standard for, uh, EV charging stations in town. I'm on Design Advisory Board and somebody came with a project with a lot of parking spaces. And I said, are you doing anything about putting an EV charging station in here? And somebody shouted out from the audience, you can't make them do that. And I'm thinking, we don't even want to encourage this kind of thing. Um, a lot of people, or more people are driving EVs here. They come out from the city, New York, obviously. There's a lot of our money is coming from there. We want to make sure that they can come up and be able to get back. So I think it's good for the environment and our economy. So I'm just wondering what the select board members might be on that.
Thanks for your question, Ray. We were just, um, well, one thing that came up on the interweb was that snow had been piled up in front of the chargers in the parking lot. And I believe, uh, Select Board member West had, uh, gotten, gotten on that right away and I hope the snow is removed. But, uh, one of the answers to that is that they can put them in and the provider of those, those units, the chargers with, it's a pay-for-play. And they would take the proceeds or, or share the proceeds with, uh, the parking lot owner. So it's not, it's never, I don't think in that case it's a ever force them to do it. I, I think it's more of a benefit to the parking lot owner to search out and find somebody they can partner with.
Yeah, you know, there, in my experience, I've used a couple of these, um, and such, they seem to be down here and there, not working. But I know that the Tesla ones, for example, are really good. Uh, I don't know we have any Tesla in, in town.
I, I, I don't know that either. Uh, maybe, oh, I'm not even going to say because the owner of that property would say, really? You told them I have a Tesla charger? But anyway. The, uh, the ones that are behind Walgreen, I, I will find out and I'm sure Jonathan will probably find out before me, um, who maintains them. Because if they're not working, that's not a good thing. But they are privately owned, I believe. And, yeah. Great. I'm just going to repeat what Bill just said. Green Mountain Power owns them. So I'm sure we'll be getting in touch with them.
Any other responses from the table? Any other questions from the audience? Or you guys want, in case anyone's still thinking up a question, we have a great audience here tonight. And I think any of us who have been to a municipal meeting can agree, that's not usually the case. If you were elected to the Select Board or reelected, um, what would you do to inspire or encourage residents to participate in our municipal process?
I think we start with, uh, I think Laura.
Sorry, you caught me off guard. Hold on.
No, no worries. Oh, you guys have a mic too, as I said a few times.
Okay.
So for this one, I'd like to start by sharing a statement, again, that we use at the office. I'm there a lot, 60 hours a week. Um, you need to tune in. You need to lean in. It's your responsibility as a good steward of the community to take part in shaping of, in the shaping of it. I find that most people only get involved when they have something to gripe about. When people get involved because they have an interest or an idea, that is when amazing things happen. You see what's possible and we all learn from that experience. One thing I would like to see more, is, is more involvement from our younger demographic. When my daughter was, attended BBA, she actually sat on the Design Review Board for a two-year term. It was a good experience for her and I'm sure that her contributions were helpful and insightful. I'm not sure how that would work, but having some sort of student internship opportunities would be a great way to connect. Um, I've also been amazed at the talent and the wealth of knowledge that people in this community have. And I suggest that you share that knowledge. We get a lot of, um, great feedback at Cell Tower meetings and sometimes I think, oh my God, that our community is filled with scientists. It's pretty amazing. Um, additionally, there is the responsibility of the board members. I made myself available to anyone that wanted to reach out. I always acknowledged each email by replying that I had read it, if nothing else. We held meet, meet and greets, um, which were lightly attended. During last year's campaign, I volunteered in the community and enjoyed that so much that I continued to work every fireman's pancake breakfast since. It's a great way to see a lot of people in one morning and connect. Volunteering in the community is, is truly a great way to connect. I will just do a small plug. Pancake breakfast canceled this weekend. It's on for the following weekend.
I was able to, um, get quite a few members of the community, like Bill Drunzig, Pete Kealan, uh, Norshire Bookstore, Langway and all of them to go to the Planning Commission using technology. Emailing everyone, texting everyone, making them aware of the issue and getting them to show up. So, I mean, there are various sources you can use to get more community involvement.
I always tell people that local meetings are live theater. Most nights it's the only show in town and best of all, no one follows the script. So if that's not compelling enough, uh, I don't know what you could do to beat that. But we, we are fighting apathy. We are fighting the allure of the little screen we all carry in our pocket. And it's not easy, especially on a cold night like tonight, to get out there. I've thought about this topic in terms of town meeting because I'm particularly involved in that and, uh, particularly distressed by the few number of people that attend. So I think there are many things the Select Board could do. Could provide childcare. You could try again to entice people with a meal. Uh, maybe we should try a 50-50 raffle where the payoff comes as the last article and you have to be present to win. Those are all thoughts, but thankfully we still live in a small town where one person can still make a difference and every person ought to try.
Luke, you got, you know, bumped out of the order, so I'll let you, I'll let you go and then I'll go after you.
I'll finish it up. You go ahead. I'll finish up. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, there's plenty of opportunities to be involved if you want to be involved and, and most have been mentioned, but uh, GNAT, the town website, uh, obviously social media, the town has a Facebook page, the Manchester Journal, Zoom at our meetings. Um, and, and I agree, we don't see enough people at, at, uh, the town meeting. It's, it's woefully underattended. So there's a lot of room for improvement there. And, um, the, uh, the sad thing I think is regarding that little handheld device is that a lot of discussion and complaints take place on social media. And, um, and it's wrought with misinformation and a lot of personal dissatisfaction. So I would encourage people to leave that, uh, medium behind and come to our meetings or attend them via Zoom or, or, uh, one of those other places I mentioned.
So when I was in student government in my undergrad, this was always the big battle. How do we get people to attend our meetings? How do we get them to be involved? Because it always felt like it was the same 20 kids who were stepping into all the leadership roles. And the ideas would be, well, let's have a, a meet and greet and let people come in and we'll feed them. And my response was always, there's only so many meetings people want to attend where they get free Papa John's. Um, the idea of us wanting to sort of, let's have people come to us is good and we want to be open. We want to be receptive. But, and I, and I'll push back a little bit, uh, with Mike and, and that, you know, the, the apathy. I don't think we're fighting apathy. I think people want to be involved. I think a lot of people just don't know where to start. And I think that can start with us, that when we are out and about, when people are saying, hey, this is a problem I'm having, or they're upset about something. You can help guide them. You can invite them. Hey, I think you would be great on this commission. I think you would be great to run for this. Or I think, you know, we need volunteers for this. How about you step into that? We're, we're, we're hearing them and we're offering them a conduit in which they can take action. I think many people, again, they're not feeling apathy. They're feeling frustration in the sense of, I can't do anything. And when we are out and about, when we are highly visible, we can help guide them to a possibility where they can take action. And I think that's one great way to start helping with participation. In all civic events, when we're out and about, making sure that we're identifiable, making sure that we are, uh, introducing ourselves and making sure that we are continuing to encourage people to be participatory in all the events that are out there. Another, other possibilities, working with the locals, and I'm saying, when I say working with the local school teachers, building relationships with local civics teachers, social studies teachers, and saying, can we come in and talk about local government to your classes? Can we talk about how students can be involved in it? That for some of these juniors and seniors who in a few short years will now be voting members and can be participatory in this. Or we might even offer a crazy idea, perhaps lower election interests for municipal elections. Seventeen, sixteen, and now putting it in the hands of younger voters and saying, hey, you now have a voice in your local government. We heard earlier of, of Vermont's students graduating, going on and not coming back to Vermont. Many do, usually around about their late twenties, early thirties. But now they might want to stay because, hey, we've invested in this. We've taken part in this. We voted on this. It gives ownership. So there are a number of ways that we can approach this and I think it goes beyond just saying, hey, come talk to us anytime. We're making ourselves available. I think people want to take action and if we can help them find that conduit, that pathway in which they can take action, I think they're going to thank us for that.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Luke. Well, uh, I think what we'll do now is just go to the closing statements. So we'll give each one of the candidates, uh, one minute, uh, each to, uh, wrap things up, uh, say some, whatever it was they didn't have a chance to say earlier. And I was thinking maybe since we started off with Mike and Greg, we'll, maybe start with Luke and Laurie and come backwards uh, in that direction, if that's okay. So, uh, uh, before I turn the microphone over to Luke, uh, I just wanted to say, um, again, thank you all for coming. And, uh, just as a reminder, uh, voting will be taking place, of course, at town meeting on, uh, well, Australian ballot voting here in Manchester will be held on Tuesday, March 4th from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's supposed to be open. But you can also vote early for Select Board members starting tomorrow. Our timing turned out to be magnificent for this microphone tonight. Uh, so, um, hopefully you found the conversation tonight as interesting and informative as I have. And, uh, we'll take away some additional messages about each one of the candidates. So without any further ado, Luke, if you would mind getting us started with a, a one-minute-long closing statement and then we'll go backwards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who attended either virtually or in person today. And I'd further like to express my gratitude for the people who helped arrange for me to participate via Zoom. And again, I'm sorry I could not be with you in person. Um, Manchester is at a crossroads, as I see it. And as a candidate, I'm someone who is tied into the schools, public safety and our communities of faith, which are excellent conduits for us to learn of the needs of our community. I have a strong background in administration, crisis management and planning. I'm a father and a homeowner. In short, I'm an average citizen, a person with thoughts, but also plans. And it's in the planning and doing, the work of the research, that I want to help set a clear course for Manchester that holds to our picturesque identity and that is still home to all, rich, poor, or the often lost middle class. And I think we can do this. I wasn't able to address it. You can see this in Luke from Manchester's Facebook page. Uh, talking about interlocal agreements, where we work with our local communities to help streamline our systems and perhaps in cooperation to help lower costs to the taxpayers. I've been a Manchester resident for six years and it's a place I hope to call home until the day I die. And I hope tonight I've given you a glimpse as to why I love this community, why I look forward to raising my children here and being an active and productive member of our town. Thank you.
Manchester is a special place. We live in an extremely generous community. Countless individuals and businesses give back to all of us every single day. Select Board members should have two common traits. Relational intelligence, where you are able to effectively listen to everyone. Not just listen, but hear them and be respectful. And you must be able to dig in and do the research. In addition, one should be impartial and responsible to the people. Balancing the municipal budget while keeping the tax rate low, as low as possible, is the goal. All of that may seem easy, however, it's a balancing trick that very few people can truly be successful at. I believe I earned your confidence and trust during the three years I served on the board from 2021 to 2024. Last year, I lost by 11 votes with a record voter turnout. I know that those that did not vote for me were seeking change and a fresh outlook. I came here tonight not to tell you that you made a mistake, but to share with you more about myself in hopes that you will vote for me this year. The courage to do this again comes from my passion for this town that I have called my home for 29 years. I respectfully request your vote on March 4th to serve a two-year term.
I don't have anything written. Um, my name is.
I want to bring that closer to you.
Do I have to?
Yes, they can hear you.
I'm running because I'm just frustrated with the system. I feel like my voice hasn't been heard, um, multiple times. I feel like my voice hasn't been heard multiple times with my issues. I feel that I would be good in the position of listening and following through for individuals of our community, and taking it to the next level. I might not be the most educated person on all of the issues, but I will learn about the issues that we're dealing with, and work with everyone to accomplish some big tasks. I mean, this town is going to grow substantially, I think, in the next five years, you know? I think we just have to be ready for it. And our zoning needs to be in line, so that's why I'm running.
I want to thank Andrew, and Cherise, and Ed, and the crew here tonight, for all that you guys did to bring this about. It's terrific. Why does anybody want to serve on the Select Board? That's, that would probably be my number one question, having done it now for quite a long time. But what I've found out, it's, it can be very frustrating, but it's mostly rewarding. And I think, especially now, that state and local government is probably the best guardrails we have to some tectonic change that's going on in our country. And I think that we need to be diligent about those changes. Right off the bat, we're being faced with funding issues that we were counting on that may not actually take place, so those are things we have to respond to quickly. I have really enjoyed serving on all of the boards I've been on, and I've especially enjoyed serving on the board with the current members, and Lori was also there recently. People say it's a thankless job, and to a great degree, it is. But it's also very, very rewarding to know that a lot of the decisions you made have made Manchester what it is. And I don't, it's arguable that this isn't a fantastic place to live, especially considering there are only 4,400 people here. And to have as many visitors as we have, and people who want to move here and come here, to where there's such a lack of inventory in housing, is not such a bad thing, compared to a lot of other places. So we are supremely lucky to live here, and I'm very lucky to serve the town of Manchester. And I appreciate all of you who came out tonight, and people who are watching on GNAT. And I look forward to hopefully continuing to serve you for the next three years. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to extend my thanks especially to all the people who came out tonight. I want to tell Greg that I heard his statement about Rutland and Burlington, I believe he's mistaken, but I will check into that, and if he's not, I will certainly give him credit for that. I think it is clear, though, that by having a charter, those towns do collect their own tax, which they get to keep the entire amount. The other thing on the charter issue is, I put out the number of greater than $790,000 in the last four quarters, and Greg's initial reaction was, that number is highly exaggerated. I challenged him in a letter to the editor this week to come up with what the correct number is. I haven't heard it yet, and since he's spoken for the last time, I guess I won't hear it It is necessary sometimes for the Select Board to go into executive session. But just because the town, the Select Board can go into executive session, doesn't mean that it should go into executive session, and it doesn't mean that it can't share information with the town about what's going on. Just to say we're going into executive session to discuss contract matters, and then come out and take a vote, is not a commitment to transparency, as I see it. Greg did not respond to my comments about accountability, particularly in his role as watchman for the Select Board. And yes, the development on Benson Road is not being constructed, but we have created an opening in our Aquifer Protection Area for sewage treatment that we need to close that loophole. And if he doesn't want to put his name on that amendment that did it, he certainly didn't have any problem pushing for it when it was approved. So on all my four issues, I think we can do better, and we must do better, and we owe that to the voters of Manchester. Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess that was a little bit tight. I want to thank you all again for coming, I want to thank our online audience. I especially want to thank my good friend, Cherie Sorm, for her great work with putting this together. Cherie, that was fantastic, thank you. Also want to thank my old friends at GMA TV for doing the livestream and the video. There are two Select Board seats. One is a three-year, one's a two. Don't get them confused. Thank you all very much.